Amen.
Again, thank you all for joining us for our April 3, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started on here, Melissa, if you want to come up to the mic, we do have a public session coming up on Thursday, and she just wants to kind of, with this many people here, I think we want people to be aware of that and participation in it, so.
Hello, my name is Melissa, I'm the Director of Public Relations for the City of Springdale, and I just wanted to let you guys know, we are having a public meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, in this room, and the purpose of it is to help City Council and the Mayor's Office prioritize which street projects we'd like to complete as part of the bond program. So there'll be gigantic maps for you to take a look at, some of the projects that have been identified, and you'll have an opportunity to give us feedback and let us know which projects you would like to see. We are also having a public comment period, so between now and April 19th, you can submit a comment form, they're available in the Mayor's Office, they're also available on our website, which is w.springdalear.gov. You're free to call the Mayor's Office if you'd like us to send you a link, if you need any more information, but you have until April 19th to submit comments if you're not able to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And with that, I'll call this meeting to order, if we could do roll call?
Harry Compton.
Here.
Roy Covert.
Here.
Bebe Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller. Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Aaron Panado.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
All right, any questions or comments for last month's minutes?
The motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. First item we have on here is public hearing, proposed amendment to Chapter 130 to amend Article 4 District Regulations, Section 1, A1 District to add UC Unit 21 Trades and Services, presented by Patsy Christie.
We have been asked to hold a public hearing, and I propose amendment to, as Terry said, to Chapter 130, to the requirements of the A1 District. Oh, because I can hear you better.
You don't think they can hear me out there, okay. We've been asked to hold a public hearing on a revision to the zoning ordinance to add an amendment to the Article 4 districts, which are the district regulations, and this is the A1 District, and the request is to add a use unit 21 as a conditional use as trades and services. I want to make sure that you understand what a use unit 21 is and what that would provide as a conditional use. A use unit 21 is establishments engaged primarily in providing household maintenance and similar services which fully, which fulfill recurrent needs of residents of nearby areas but are generally incompatible with primary residential districts because they break the continuity of retail frontage. They include such uses as animal hospitals, armature rewinding, auctioneer, building material establishments, cabinet maker, contract construction services, contractors' offices and warehouses, direct selling, general merchandise, disinfecting and exterminating services, electrical repair service, electrical supply, equipment supplies and repair, farm supplies, feed store, funeral homes, crematorium, furniture repair, glass sales, heating and air conditioning equipment sales, institutional furniture and furnishings, denitorial supply, laundry service, linen supply and industrial laundry, lumber sales, machine shop, medical and orthopedic appliances, merchandise vending machines, monument sales including process operations, packing and crating services, parcel delivery service, photographer, plumbing services, plumbing, electrical, air conditioning, heating shops, reupholstery, rug cleaning and repair sales, self-storage facilities, taxidermists, tool sharpening, trucking establishments, vending machine services and supplies. As a conditional use, any use that is proposed as a use unit 21 would have to submit that conditional use application, all the adjacent property owners would be notified, and then the Planning Commission can review that for compatibility in that area and set whatever conditions they deem that are necessary in keeping with the guidelines of the ordinance for that conditional use to go in. Conditional uses are not transferable, once they are approved, to an applicant at that location, they can't be automatically transferred to another owner or operator unless the Planning Commission grants the transfer of that conditional use. So this is a public hearing to allow anyone to make comments about this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance itself. This is coming to the council by Congressman, Alderman and I spoke to the Congressman today, my mind is not real clear right now, by City Council Member Jim Reed, and he may want to address this before we take other public comments.
Is that a promotion or a demotion?
Yeah, that's your point of view, is to whether that, which that would be, yes.
Jim Reed, City Council, Springdale, Board One, Position One. I was asked to bring this forward to the commission by people who want to put a business in an A1 zone. I'm not asking you to, to approve that particular business or anything else. What I would like to see, though, is, in our area out there, we have a lot of big acreage, and I also understand what's allowed in a use unit 21, I'm not sure, we don't need to work on that and cut that down a little bit, because that's a lot of, lot of stuff in there. But one of the things I want to look at is, and I'm using plumbing just because that's on my head, if a farmer has, you know, 40 acres, and his son or grandson becomes a plumber and wants to put in a metal building for a shop somewhere on that 40 acres, he can't, he doesn't even have the right to come and ask to do that. He doesn't, he has no way to come and ask to do that on an A1 zone. I think that when a person has acreage, they need to be able to, be able to ask for that. I understand very much the, and want you to understand that I know that it is a conditional use, and I think those conditions need to be set and followed and adhered to, you know, and I also think that the neighborhoods need to be watched out for. So if somebody comes up for that condition and people are against it or whatever, then I think we need to listen to them. But that's what I'm here for, and that's what I brought it forward for, and I turned it all over to you guys, let the public talk on it.
Thanks, Jim. I'll open up to the audience if there's any questions or comments. If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Retzloff, and my address is 3485 Roma Drive, and I would like to just express disapproval for this proposal, and I'll just enumerate my reasons why. This area where this...
That's not that map out there.
Oh, not, not this, but the, the parcel of property that is in contention right now is, I think, about a four or five acre parcel in this particular little subdivision, which I think is probably the biggest piece of property in that most everybody's property is three acres or less. And this is a quiet residential area with young children, working people, a lot of retired people live there, and driving commercial trucks on this street creates a safety issue for people who walk and bike in that residential area. We don't have any sidewalks, this is an older residential area, so we don't have sidewalks, everybody just walks on the, on the narrow streets that are there. So the, the individual who has that property has built an entrance off of Roma Drive into this four or five acre lot. I'm not sure how large an acre lot it is, but there's three commercial vehicles that come into there off of Roma Drive. We live, our property is not directly adjacent to, to his, but our property is catty corner from his, and there are times as early as 5:30 in the morning when I hear his trucks starting up in the morning. They start at different times, so it's, it's, it's noisy, it, it just isn't conducive to a residential area. Not only that, but those trucks are very large dump trucks, they're very heavy trucks that run on a residential street, and I, I mean, I'm not a civil engineer, but I have a hard time imagining that with them running up and down the street all the time that that's good, good for a residential street. So, again, I, we'd like to keep this a residential neighborhood, that's what it is, that's what it has been for many, many years, and I know there's others in our neighborhood who will get up and I think probably have the same sentiments I do, that we'd like to retain this as a, a quiet residential area, not change it into something that can ultimately be a place where, I mean, at this point, there could be 20 trucks parked on this property instead of just three, but even the three that are currently there are disruptive, so appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name's Mary Ann Lewis. I live at 3423 Roma Drive. I've been there for 22 years. It's been residential for 50 years, because I know the man who broke all the segments off and sold them. A lot like what Kathy said is, this Roma is a one and a half lane street. You can't put two cars on it, and certainly not a dump truck or vehicle and a car. It's quiet out there. People live there. They have animals there. There's horses and cows and chickens, and I even had llamas at one time. That street is used for our neighborhood. They jog, they take their babies out in strollers, they walk their dogs. Some of the kids play on this street because there's no traffic, and I can't imagine even wanting to put a commercial building in that area. Have any of you seen this property? You've gone out and seen it? Well, in case you haven't, my home, I'm the fifth one on the street. It's two and a half acres, this only shows a partial of it. I don't want dump trucks going up and down my street. It is quiet. We moved there because it was quiet and peaceful, and our neighbors all take care of each other, and...
If you can pull that mic down just a little bit.
Oh, sorry. I can't imagine wanting to put a commercial building in, in an area like that. I know there's a lot of property out there. That's because people raise animals, you know, or they bale hay. This is a residential agricultural place. It has no room for any kind of a commercial, especially with all the trucks and stuff. I just can't imagine it, if you've ever lived out there, you would think, this is crazy, you know. I, for one, think it would change me drastically, even to the point of selling my home. And I know a lot of other people who think the same thing, because we're out there, because it's residential and agriculture, and if you change that, then it's not where we all want to be. And I think, I think Kathy said the, the, the most of it, but we who live out there, and, and there's a lot of us, may not be all at this meeting tonight, but it affects all of us, because down that street is a cul-de-sac, and even Martin Road, which is a two-lane, they bale hay on one side. They have horses and arenas a little further down on that. There's a church in back of that, although it's loosely used.
You've painted a very clear picture of the area on that one, so.
Okay, well, then that's basically what I want to say, is, is that I think you'll ruin a lot of people's lives, a lot of the reasons why they moved out there. So I would wish that you would not zone that commercial. Six miles down the road on 112 is zoned commercial. Six miles is not a lot to buy a place for commercial. It's on 112, that's the one they use, well, besides Roma. I just don't see the need to, to rezone our property when he could buy commercial property. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, if you'll come to the mic, state your name and address, please.
My name is Alex Constein, I live at 3352 Roma Drive. We have recently moved out there into the neighborhood, and I don't have a lot of the sentimental side of what has been described, but in particularly, due to the city's efforts of putting inadequate amount of information on the internet, finding cities' future zoning, or finding the future zoning districts, or what the city believes that an area should or should not be zoned, is fairly easy to find on the internet. In purchasing a piece of property like this, on the A1 side, I'm entrusting that, that the Planning Commission would have the responsibility to see that, you know, it's A1 zoning, and you know what the future looks like. With this proposed change, we would have to be vigilant, constantly vigilant, to see that if someone came in, they could have the opportunity to go in and, and obtain a, a conditional use permit. You know, in a lot of cases, I've seen, I've been a part of commercial real estate for 12 years, and I've seen people that buy property just because of prices and not what the use, the surrounding uses should be, and this is the same example. Your maps show that this is a low-density residential area, and is proposed to be such. I just think that it's a, it's a, it's on the buyer's responsibility and due diligence that they should go out and see what you guys plan for this area, instead of having to go buy a cheap piece of property and then go and get a permit to operate what they believe should or should not be there. If, if it, if it was conducive for that use, then by all means, let's use it. But I, you know, I know the city's using, spending a lot of assets in order to produce, or to properly cultivate that area for what they think it should or should not be for the city, and adding one more step that we have as residents, that we have to watch out for, just, I don't, I don't believe that it's in the best interest of the property owners in the area. The one question that I do have, if I'm not mistaken, the A1 zoning has a minimum parcel size of two acres, is that correct?
Two acres and 200-foot frontage on a public street, yes.
So to address the, the property in question, he's operating on, I think it's 1.5 acre parcel? So, and would it be true that a additional conditional use or waiver would be required in order to operate since it's under the two-acre requirement for A1 zoning?
Well, we haven't gotten that far, because he can't apply for a conditional use for that, so we haven't looked at the lot size of what he's going to use yet.
I guess my question is, since it's under the set requirement, any property would have to obtain additional permitting to operate on it?
Correct.
In regard to this property, I can't find, and I've talked to the city department, the city street department, and I've talked to the planning department, I can't find any permitting that allowed the improvement of the, of the parking lot and the gravel to Roma Drive. I can't find, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of evidence that shows that following, following, if, if something was said, if that would be followed, I don't know. I know that he, he doesn't just park two trucks on it, it all the time. He's also park, he's also storing stuff into the, into the barn. He works, I know that they work out there on, on vehicles if something's wrong. But those are not, I know that's mute compared to what we're talking about today, but I, I just don't believe that adding an additional stipulation for the landowners to have to watch out for is necessary for this area when the city has deemed this area to be residential, and so that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir, if you'll come to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Robin Retzloff, 3485 Roma Drive. I just want to say that I'm afraid that passing this amendment tonight will open the doors to all kinds of businesses kind of sliding in unnoticed, and all of a sudden, you've got a business in your backyard that you didn't realize was coming in, and it's too late to stop it. If, if nobody gets notified, I don't know exactly how the rules go, if you have to notify people before this all happens, but, but allowing this amendment to pass, I think is going to create a lot of people trying to slide a plumbing business or a electrical business in the backyard, maybe behind your house. How would you feel if, if somebody across the street from you bought a house and added on a garage and attacked Joe's Plumbing on this garage, and all of a sudden, it's a, you've got plumbing trucks coming in and out of there, supply trucks, technicians? I don't think any of you would want that, and I don't think it's going to help your property value at all. I know that that's not going to help my property value, living across my commercial business. So that's about all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
My name's Sean Sidrick, I'm just down the road a little bit on Brandy Lane, which is still in that same neighborhood, and I just, am just concerned with it being commercial. Like I said, it's a family neighborhood. My children go out and play all the time, and their cousins come and play on those roads, and we, we take family walks and bike rides, so I'd just be cautious in what, what's allowed to be there.
Thank you.
And I'm Kathy Mark at 3460 Roma Drive, and part of the thing about this, too, is that I live, there's a lot in between me and this lot, and so I found out that the, the original stuff happened because I walk every day, and I saw the little tiny sign that said, "This is up for rezoning." And so one of the things that's concerning to me is that if we do this, then, since I don't live directly adjacent to the lot, like someone said, constant vigilance, you know, you have to really be watching to make sure that someone doesn't put something in there that you don't even know about until it's already established. So that's kind of what happened to us now. It's like, one minute the place changed hands, the next thing you've got a big giant driveway and a bunch of trucks parked in there, and I'm one of the people that walk around the neighborhood every day, and so you have to watch for the trucks now, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. And just one thing that you brought up on there, we do put signs out saying the adjacent property owners are notified. You can be notified as well through, you can actually sign up as far as notifications, so I just want to, we always take the opportunity to make sure people do know that, that you, you can be made aware of additional things across the city through notifications, and you can do that through the, the city website, so. Yes, sir? If you can state your name and address.
My name's Bill Plumley, I live on 3295 Brandy Lane, which is around the corner, same subdivision on Springs Heights, and I wanted to say residential, not commercial, not of any kind. I think that was in the original plot of the original subdivision, and what it needs to stay residential.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments in the audience? Okay, it's to the commission.
Just a couple of quick comments. First, I'd like to appreciate Councilman Reed for bringing this forward. I will tell you that it's not always easy to bring these type of things forward, particularly when you know there may be some adversity to them, but I appreciate the Councilman for bringing it forward on behalf of his constituents. I will tell you that his comments earlier, I think, run true tonight, which is, when these things are brought forward, his comment was, "We would listen to them, we would act accordingly." And I think he said, "We would listen exactly to what the neighbors have said." I think the neighbors have been very clear, and so I would tell you that it's now time for us to respond accordingly.
Well, the requirement tonight was to hold a public hearing. We don't have to take any action on it tonight. It has been brought forward. It's not something we've discussed at work session, we haven't, we haven't had a time to study it, or talk about it, or anything else, but we did get comments from the public, and we can leave it at that.
I think my concerns, too, is just, there's too much in trades and services right now that would really concern me in, in allowing that as a possibility in conditional use, and many of those things, I think, would give a false sense of a right to use when improvements are made for one of these trades and services, that then cannot be passed to the next homeowner or the next business, if someone closes the business and wants to open a different one, and they've put a significant investment in.
I'd personally rather have it in a work session where we can discuss, coming here without discussion, try to vote on this tonight.
Well, I don't know that, and maybe Jim was asking for a vote. We, we set the public hearing so we could at least start the conversation. We have the public hearing tonight, I don't know that we expect any action to be taken tonight, other than we heard from the public.
And I believe there's still some confusion on here, because this is not a rezoning.
Right.
And I've heard the term rezoned, I heard the term commercial, and that's...
Well, now, Mr. Campbell did come in and ask for it to be rezoned.
But this right here, that we said, that this is not a rezoning.
Right, this is not the rezon, that's correct.
So I think that's another part of confusion right there, so. So it's not a rezoning to commercial, but it is confusing enough to give you that thought, that it is going to be commercial, so that's another topic we need to discuss about.
My comment, my comments would, would be similar to Bebe's, in that I do believe that we need something that addresses the, because so much of our city and the undeveloped part of it is in that A1, so I do feel like we need something there to be, to be able to grant a conditional use, to look at it, weigh the comments of the residents around it, but I also think that the use unit 21 is far too, that if we're going to have a list of things that could be conditionally approved, that they err closer to an agricultural use, still commercial, but, you know, not sanitation and what, you know, and I would be more comfortable with voting on it had we, would we trim that list down.
Yeah, there's a couple of callouts in here as well, that's, you know, we heard about a specific property, but this is a proposed amendment that would impact the entire city.
Correct.
And that whole piece, and the callouts, and I think everybody needs to understand this, is, is that when you have annexed properties into the city, they automatically come in as an A1. We've got several places along Sunset that are an A1, in that whole piece. So this is good that we're bringing this up, because we do need to address a lot of the use units, even in our commercial zones. They are too broad as far as the types of use units that can be leveraged in here, so, I mean, I think there needs to be some... So, I mean, I think there needs to be some, it's going to have to be a series of work sessions that we do, and actually working with the council as well on this, that we do need to address, not just for the A1 area, but for others as well, as far as the potential use units on it. But I just called that out, that, you know, this is a pretty open piece that could have a tremendous impact across the city. I'm not saying positive or negative, it's just really more of an impact on it. I also wanted to call out as well that, like I stated, that when properties come into the city as an annexed, whether it's petition to be annexed and so forth, it defaults to an A1. So, if your property is an A1, you know, one of the ways, you know, you can get that changed to actually be rezoned a residential and those types of things. So, I heard a lot of properties here that are part of A1 components of that, but those could be as far as residential in that whole piece. So, there's a difference as far as how master planning is for different areas versus what the actual landowners actually have their properties zoned in that whole piece. So, I mean, look at your own properties in that whole piece and understand where that's at, so.
And we don't show anything on our land use plan as, for comprehensive land use, future development as being A1. An A1 zone is a holding zone until determination is made, what is the highest and best use for that in the future.
So, we're hearing this tonight, so I mean, if it was to move forward, it would require a motion as far as that whole piece. If there is no motion, then we've heard this, and it can go back as far as to work on it as far as more detail. Okay? So, do I have any motion on this? Okay. We will take this into consideration and work this in more detail as far as potential in the future as far as any type of use unit, but no action being taken on this right now. Okay? Was that clear to those that came up and spoke?
Yes, ma'am. If you'll come up to the mic.
Let me do say, right now, he can't operate the business at that location.
How's it going to be?
Right now, they have filed an appeal. Is Ernest here?
Yes.
Yes. They have filed an appeal through the court system that hasn't been heard yet. Are they required, can they continue to operate until that appeal is heard?
It's always been our practice, if someone appeals to the court, that we just maintain the status quo until there's been a decision in the court case. So, whatever the status quo is at this point.
Can I answer your question? Meaning, they can continue as they were until the court case is heard? And I don't know that, there's not a hearing date been set yet.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is tabled item R-18-03 Pinnacle Car Service Incorporated, 2944 North 48th Street, from A1 to C1, presented by Steve Zegar.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff, thank you. With me is Jeff Wright, who is the principal in Pinnacle Car Services Incorporated. And he's here for you to answer questions for you and respond to comments. Next slide, please. This property is in the I-49 corridor on 48th Street, and as I was talking to Jeff, I realized, I think, for the first time today, that it is in Benton County by about 50 feet. You can see from that picture, you can see I-49. Next slide, please. That is looking up from 48th Street, back up the hill into the property. Next slide, please. That is taken, and it's not a particularly good shot, but right behind those trees is I-49. There's also, right along the tree line right there, the, what I think is a, an exfil for Spring Creek that drains west to east, and I'm sorry, the other way, east to west in that region. Next slide, please. The property driveway entrance is there, you're looking north in that photograph. Next slide. And then, you're looking south in that photograph. Next slide, please. That didn't come out as well as I wanted it. What you see there are the businesses and other non-residential establishments that are in the immediate vicinity of this proposed rezon. The subject is there in the middle on the red pin. Businesses are in green pins. There is a towing and recovery right there, just north of Bob Mills Road. Immediately across the street from that is a Buddhist worship center. You go about a quarter mile north, and that's the property we're asking you to rezone tonight. Not terribly far to the northeast is, on the other side of the interstate, is building and earth engineers in that same corridor. And then, as you continue up, about 500 feet up north is a church, Central Christian Church. And then, not quite, I'd say 300 feet past that is a construction company with heavy earth-moving equipment and tiles and things like that, that sit between 48th and I-49. And then, as you can see, the Game and Fish Learning Center that y'all approved recently is there in that same general vicinity. I realize it's not immediately adjacent to 48th, but that's, that's an indication of what's going on in this area right now. Next slide, please. This is your land use plan map, and I know you've seen that before. What I understand is that with the passing of the bond issued, 48th Street, north of Bob Mills, up to Wagon Wheel is in your, and it's interesting that we just heard tonight about the prioritization of street plans, but it is in your long-term street plan improvement. Next slide, please. What I'd like the commission to know tonight is, the property is less than 100 yards from I-49 as it sits right now. It's in your comprehensive improvement plan for 48th Street. There are multiple non-residential uses on both sides of the interstate. There's an approved residential subdivision that is one property removed from the subject property that's been approved, as I understand it, for at least 12 years, and it's not been developed. And the intended use is low-impact and not incompatible with the current usage in the vicinity. And Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll ask the commission if they have comments or questions, or if you'd like to ask anything of Jeff.
I'll ask if you have staff comments on here, so.
As you just saw on that, the comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan and is not recommended for approval.
Okay. And I'll open it up to the audience if you have any questions or comments. Okay? It's to the commission.
What, what's going to?
The question is not what's going there, it's what can go in and see what's-
Well, I'm looking at what can go there.
Okay.
You can read it, though, if you'd like to.
Okay.
Or I can.
Go ahead, if you've got it.
Citywide public uses by right, cultural, recreational, and health facilities, offices, studios, and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, parking lot, healthcare clinic. And there's other stuff on conditional approval, but that's it. And then, the comment from the ordinance says, "Commercial uses within this district should not depend on market areas larger than the neighborhood served." That's why I was asking, basically, I was trying to find out if C1 is the right, is really what they are asking for it to be zoned to. Does that make sense? Sorry, I'm-
No, may I? Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
The current use, the current planned use, I think, probably would go under C2, actually, which is my client to be able to put cars from his car service there.
Okay. That's... So, would that be-
But you're asking for it to be rezoned to C1 for the purpose of, that's what you want the property to be now, correct?
Well, C2, I think, for the plans, would fit better.
Okay, then, I'll go back and ask the question again. Why did you, why did you apply for a C1 zone if you really thought you needed a C2? Is there something different that you want to use with it that would fit in one of those categories, or? Because we can't, we don't normally upgrade from, if you request a C1, we could go down to an O1. We don't generally revise it here to a C2 zone at the table.
I asked for, no, I asked for C1 because there, I thought that was included in the C1 category. That could be my mistake.
Okay. Okay. So, do you want us to go ahead and hear the C1 zone, or do you want to wait and revise it, come back and ask for a C2, which would mean-
No, I think, I want C1.
Okay.
I would ask you to consider C1 tonight.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I know we have discussed, love us, thank commissioners, about the future of that Frontage, interstate frontage, very visible. Personal opinion would be that is primary for commercial. Infrastructure is not ready for commercial this time, for commercial businesses to go up and down through there. So, that's kind of in the catch-22 for me right now. We go ahead and zone these areas commercial. We get these in there without the infrastructure, and that's a, that's a serious concern that I have on that. I know we have other areas down there, that was before my time.
And I, I mean, I would say, just because it's adjacent to the interstate does not mean it's commercial. You go all over the United States and there's-
Well, sure. But it's a, it's a good area for commercial.
So, to me, that's, that's not necessarily the plan. Some of the things that were there, were there in advance-
Or annexed.
-and grandfathered in.
Exactly.
So, they were not commercial because we allowed it, they were commercial because they came into the city as commercial. And as grandfathered in, the hope is that one day they will go away, not that we will increase that usage in that area. Now, could it possibly go, you know, not the way that we planned? Sure. But like you said, right now, the infrastructure is not such to be able to hold up on that end. So, I, I would have concerns about doing a C1.
I have concerns about the traffic, extra traffic at that way, because there is already, it's almost to the hazardous point driving those roads.
Here's my only, I'll throw something out there, you know, because we've looked at the master, we've looked at the street plans, and I think as far as the wagon wheel piece, there's what a tiger grant, I think is what was referenced, that if that does develop as far as the, the infrastructure piece, it's probably going to become more of an access type of road in there. And, you know, you guys have heard me a lot as far as we've, this is a good example why we need to do a lot of master planning in the northwest corridor. But I think, obviously, you've got Pinewood subdivisions on the other side of the interstate. However, we also heard as far as you've got, say, a residential subdivision that was planned 12 years ago, but this is an area that has not developed at all. And anything along that corridor right there, I think, does make a lot of sense as far as for commercial. And, you know, with what we're doing with the street plans, I think having more like that, that do get zoned, could be appealing to and attract additional as far as property owners or businesses as far as to come down through that particular area. I mean, we've had some nice developments that have gone on as far as, I mean, Mercy's getting ready to start, so, you know, you've got the supercenter, and then there's developments on the other sides. I think we have a golden opportunity as far as holding a lot of businesses through here a bit more accountable as far as their aesthetics in that whole piece. But I mean, I do, I agree with Brian on this. I think it is a commercial area. It is, I mean, it's a cart before the horse type of scenario of, should the roads be done first before these rezonings? Or should that be a way as far as to entice additional businesses and so forth in there? So, I mean, I think there's opportunities either way in that whole piece.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up?
Members, I appreciate, by the way, the position that you find yourselves in. We understand that this is not, that this is the beginning of the discussion about what can be done with this property in the future. It doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't end with tonight's decision if you make that decision.
Right.
Jeff is well aware of that, that this is a beginning process. It doesn't answer the question fully and completely. You do have some chicken and egg issues. I would, I would say that whether it happens by evolution or by plan, businesses tend to go where the cars are, and the cars are in that I-49 corridor. That's where they go. They want their businesses visible. It may not be that the commercial that, and I agree with Commissioner Han, it may not be that commercial is everything that goes on the interstate. On the other hand, one does tend to follow the other by nature or by intent. It's just how it works out. And so, this particular piece of property is in a position where a lot of commercial activity is going on. And my point with that was not so much to say, "Hey, you need to grant this by right." It was to give the commission an idea, and I'm not suggesting that's what you have to do. I'm suggesting that there is a lot going on here that is neither residential nor agricultural. And I think that is the trend that is coming to the I-49 corridor.
Any other comments or questions?
I mean, I'll just say that if we're looking at C1, if that's what we're going to rezon it as, I personally feel like, other than the O1, the C1 is the lowest-impact commercial that you can have. And it says in the, in the regulation that can be used in conjunction with existing commercial developments or retail developments in adjacent to neighborhood areas. So, I mean, I feel like it's a low-impact commercial. It's the wrong thing, it sounds like, to rezon it to, as far as what your purpose is. But I'd probably be okay with voting for, for a low-impact. And then, we're kind of in the position where it is a C1, low-impact, for those of us who feel like it's, could be commercial, and then maybe C2 later on when we see, when they have more solid plans and we see the road improvements and what happens up there.
Doesn't matter what their plans are, remember?
But it doesn't matter. That's, yeah, exactly.
Is it to be a call for a vote? Call for the vote. Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
Hayne?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Howell?
Oh.
Tyler?
Yes.
That passes five to eight, or eight, eight. Five to three, sorry. I'm looking at the total, it passes five to three, so on it.
Steph will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's staff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next section, rezoning, R-18-06 Adams Family Properties LLC, parcel 815-36194-100, from A1 to MF12, presented by Blue &amp; Associates.
Bill Gonyer, 524 West Sycamore Street in Fayetteville. We are proposing a rezon at the property located at, let me see here, 3941 Julio Road. And we want to rezon it to MF12. There are a lot of schools around the area, and there is a park to the southwest. We think it would be a perfect candidate for the rezon.
I'm sorry, we're trying to get the map up, so if I can see what we're talking about. Next slide. There we go. That's it. We're good.
Staff comments when you're ready.
The comprehensive land use plan indicates low-density residential use for this area. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan and is not recommended for approval.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Any questions or comments from the audience?
Lee of Lines, 4090 Deerhurst.
Can you pull that mic down just a little bit?
There we go. I live in the Grand Valley subdivision that is on the other side of the roundabout next to this. I don't think multifamily dwellings need to be there, single family maybe, but not multi-dwelling, multifamily dwellings. And the, talking to the neighbors in the neighborhood, they don't want it either.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's David Gulliver. I live at 3554 Hilton Road and my car, my house is almost on that, almost on there and so this property is real close to mine. And I'm not interested in having a whole bunch of, of development of different places where people live. And I've talked to people, like she said, that neighbors are not wanting that. I think I'm interested really, because I've been there for years, is more in quality development, not quantity development. And I think that that's what we need to do as, as a city, is to really look at, at proper, correct development. And if they put in a few houses, that's not a big deal. But if they go crazy with a bunch of apartments and buildings, that's not going to be proper for that property and it might have other properties in the area that are not developed yet go the same way. And that's not going to be proper for, for maintaining the quality and the value of the property of the people that are already there, like myself and the other people that live there. And that's not what I want to do and that's not what I want you to approve. So that's my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Charlie Adams. I live at 3885 Julio Road. None of the neighbors have asked me what we were going to build there, but the future plans are to be building some duplexes or fourplexes there, which we want to build all brick like we built on Crutcher Street, trying to make those areas look nicer. I am sick and tired of seeing these little houses like they've got south of us pop into that subdivision under by the park that's got like two inches of brick or just one level of brick and then it sounds like a dog pound down there. I live up there and have got no peace since that junior high has been put in there. Lakeside Junior High right across the street, they got another school right down there. I don't understand why it would be an issue when it's so loud down there right now. If you go down there up till midnight, I hear the park down at the roundabout. You hear the dogs bark, barking down there. It used to be nice and quiet and the gentleman that lives on the corner, I understand what he's talking about because he lives right there on the corner and we used to not even be walk by his house without having to be chased by dogs. But we would like to put probably in the future, we're trying to get it rezoned to put probably five to six fourplexes in there, single story, all brick, which we would have to bring the plans after the rezoning and not before. You know, we've had people keep trying to come to us to put all sorts of animals out there. We keep it, try to keep it mowed to make it look nice, but it is A1 and so there's nothing else we can do with it until we do get it rezoned. Because if we can't get it rezoned to multifamily, we're not going to put houses on there right now. And there are no good lots to buy in Springdale. As you gentlemen know, the subdivisions are harder to come by and you get all these Rousch Coleman ones like overall Tyson Road that's been put in there. I agree, we don't need that kind of building here in Springdale. We need to hold up a little bit higher standard of building. And I know, low density, low density is not even close, it seems like if you go down and look at those houses, how close they are with all the vinyl siding. But I appreciate you guys listening to me and like I said, none of the neighbors asked what we were going to put in there. They just assumed MF12, you're putting apartments in there. That's not the case. And I do live right beside this proposed land and so I will be continually living there. And we do own rental property all throughout Springdale. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Laster, 3451 Julio Road. This is just a really quiet residential area with just a, it was a gravel road when we moved there, so it's not very wide. Some traffic has picked up since the school went in, but I think if we had multiple family 12 homes, apartments there, that would add 36 to 48 additional families. Like I say, it's a quiet street. I probably live in, on one of the smallest lots and it's a, it's an acre. I walk my dog all the time. My neighbor and I walk the street and pick up trash. So we try to keep it looking nice and I just really would not like to see a multifamily homes in there. Thank you.
I'm Jane Smith, 3715 Julio. And I, we've lived there for over 30 years. It's quiet neighborhood. We've seen people come and go and all that time, we've never had anything bothered in our yard, taken, anything. Our front, front's on Julio and our back goes down to Don Tyson. And we haven't, we've decided not to have any buildings because we like to, we moved there for the rural setting and we like it. We like the cows, we like the horses. We don't even care if our neighbors' cows come over, so, our horses, so we like that. So we moved there because it was agricultural and we'd like to see it stay agricultural if possible and single family. You know, it's a beautiful little corner on Julio and Hilton and it could be a beautiful single family dwelling or something, but it is near a school, near the park. But I think that the more people, statistics prove, the more people you have condensed and that wouldn't be a lot more, but it would be somewhere in an area, the crime rate could go up and we've always felt safe. We've always felt, well, we've never, you don't hear this very often, we've never had anything taken in 30 years from our yard or our field. Everything is just very peaceful, very quiet. Personally, I'd like to see it that way, stay that way.
Thank you.
Good evening, April Reed, 3235 Clyde Lane. My house is at the intersection of Clyde and Julio. I've lived there going on two years, so not very long, but one thing that was very drawing was, it was a quiet neighborhood with large lots. My big concern is that Julio is a very, very narrow road and what we're zoning, rezoning it to is possibly 12 units in an acre. And I know he says he's not doing that, but we're not looking at what he's doing right now. So possibility of 12 units in an acre would add a lot more traffic possibly to Julio and there's not enough room for the traffic that we have now, so I'm very concerned about that. So I, I would just ask you to keep this low density and single family. Thank you.
Yeah.
Caitlin Dixon, 3925 Kirkbridge Place. I disagree with his comments about the neighborhood south of the park because I live there and I think it's great and so does, so do all of our neighbors. And on behalf of our neighborhood of Grand Valley, they do not want fourplexes or any type of multifamily home there. And so we just want to express our disapproval for this amendment, or I mean, for the rezoning and we just, that's not what we want to see. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Okay, it's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Can I make just one quick comment?
You can.
I, I just want to address just a couple, I'm a, I'm all about density, but I do feel that this is too high of a density surrounded, I would be okay with increasing the density a little bit, but not, not to an MF12. But I also want to dispute the fact that higher density does not equal crime. So I, let's be, I just wanted to bring that up, that's not necessarily true.
Thank you. So we have a call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
No.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Rezoning fails eight zero.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision. You have to file that appeal within 15 days to the city clerk and indicate why you think the planning commission's decision is in error and you will need to notify the adjacent property owners before that could be heard.
Thank you all. Thank you. Next item are 18-12 Lifestyle Development, east side of Butterfield Coach Road from A1 to SF3, presented by Chad White.
Good evening, Chad White, 913 Woodley Green Lane, Cave Springs. Just bringing forward a property on Butterfield Coach, just north of Don Tyson, south of 412, rezoning from A1 to single family.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates medium density residential use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size and encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission. Call for the vote. Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
The rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Next rezoning are 18-14 Timothy and Laurel Heinz, west of Ivy Lane, west side of North Crossover Road from A1 to C2, presented by Bates and Associates. Okay, we'll go to the next item, are 18-15 Butterfield Development Group LLC, 3515 East Robinson and 2127 Annie Street, north side of Cass Drive, from C5 to C2, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. We're requesting this, this parcel be rezoned from C5 to C2. I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and appropriate locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any questions or comments in the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero.
Planning commission will, staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Thank you.
Next item are 18-16 Springdale Downtown LLC Magnolia Gardens, 224 West Huntsville and 500 and 501 North Main Street, amendment to PUD, presented by Rodney or Brenda Anderson.
Hi, Brenda Anderson. I live at 206 Northwest Fourth in Bentonville. I'm here this evening representing the owner of the property, Springdale Downtown LLC. I know you've had an opportunity to read our submission, but I think I could summarize it just to say that it is our intent to make this property more community and trail facing. And what our intentions for operations there is to reopen the bed and breakfast that was previously approved, use the house on Huntsville that had been in single family use. It would remain single family, but we would put an onsite manager in that house. And then, you know, the event center that's there, which was in operation continuously, we would continue to operate it as an event center, but less wedding and anniversary, more toward community events that would support the grounds and, and the bed and breakfast. So working with local nonprofits and doing programming there to push that mission forward. The other, the kind of new wrinkle in our request is around the consideration for limited camping onsite. And we're honestly not sure about the demand for that, but really interested in trying to understand that over the course of the summer. We'd look to do a very small number of sites. We wouldn't build any permanent structures in association with it. We, we plan to operate all the hospitality four nights a week, basically, you know, hugging the weekend on either side. And we would only do the camping operation from May 15 to October 15, so it would be a summer only operation. We're looking at doing seven sites and they're located kind of south of both of the house at 500 and 501. The other thing that we're moving forward with, and if it hadn't rained so much, would already have occurred, is the installation of additional perimeter landscaping and we submitted a landscape plan to show that. So that really, once you're in the property, the activities are buffered from the adjoining streets and adjoining property owners. And I think that pretty much sums up our request and our intentions. Happy to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
This part has been going on for several years. It's been through a couple of changes with the medical office that was built on the southwest corner, the houses that were built along there and now it's actually been split and has two owners because they didn't buy any of the property that has frontage on to Shiloh and to, right.
That's correct.
And this, you know, the event center was built with one of the last changes. Their proposed additions, I think, are really plus for downtown, helps with revitalization efforts, help bring more people into the area. So the proposed amendments appear to be in keeping with the intent of the planned new development as originally approved and adopted and are recommended for approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Teresa Smith. I live at 604 Mill. My property is on the map. We live right across the creek, Spring Creek, from this property. My question would be for Ms. Anderson about the camping sites. I wasn't clear where the seven sites would be located.
Do you have that image in your deck or I could point to them on the map if that'd be okay, I'd be happy to do that.
I got a laser pointer, can you do it with that?
Yeah, I can.
I feel to step up to the mic. He's got one.
You got another one? Okay.
Okay, now, let's see if I can do this. Oh geez. Easier said than done. Okay, that's the bed and breakfast, right? So we do a couple of sites in that open lawn just south of the bed and breakfast. And this is the little craftsman style house that had been used as an office. And then there's a little lawn area just kind of south of that and we do a few sites there.
All of the sites interior to the property itself.
That's correct.
Camping without fires, right? Camping with no fires? No campfires?
I, I can't answer that question.
Do we want to, okay. So I haven't really thought about it, I'll be honest. I, there's a part of me that thinks that one of those fire pits from Lowe's might be kind of nice, so I hate to say that I wouldn't want to do that.
But wouldn't those kinds of decisions need to be made, those kinds of informations available to surrounding properties before you could approve anything like that? I want to say that I'm not opposed to the camping. We live on the trail, our property was annexed for the trail. I can, I can see the benefit in little campsites for people that are walking the 30-plus miles of that Greenway Trail from, from Fayetteville all the way up to the Missouri line, it's like 38 miles, don't quote me on that. It would be neat to have the little campsites, but my concerns would be animal waste, trash, and little campfires. You've got lots of properties, you've got lots of buildings on that, you've got, of course, the creek and Huntsville and Shiloh. I would think there would need to be a lot of questions answered before we could say, sure, have, have camping all over the grounds, even though I'm, I'm not opposed to it in theory, I think we need some more information.
Well, I would imagine the fire chief and the fire marshal will weigh in on what kind and what locations and what things would have to happen. They are having a manager onsite. So it's not like it's just open to anybody who comes through deciding.
So I'm assuming, and again, unanswered questions, that people would register before they lay down their camp, you know, brought in their tent or unpacked.
All of that has to be handled through their onsite. Oh, and that has to be handled through their onsite manager.
And are those questions going to be established, information on paper, before these decisions are made?
Well, it's already in the proposal that they made, that it would all be managed through their onsite manager. That is already written into it, it doesn't say anything about campsites, because quite honestly, I don't think any of us thought about it.
Right, and nothing about registering before they camped, none of that's in there yet?
Well, you got to register before you can get into the bed and breakfast, you would have to register before you could get into the...
Just like you're going to make a reservation to stay at the bed and breakfast.
The public cannot walk up and just go camp.
Say, "Hey, I'm going to camp right here and stay."
No.
Those are my questions, you know, what are some of the, what's the real information? What are the real facts before the decisions are made?
Well, and Brenda and I had that conversation when we started talking about camping. It's not going to be open up to everybody who comes through, they decide they want to stay there, they have to, and that's why...
They have to go through the gates, and, you know, because we do have the fences, and everyone has, like, we have gated access to the trail, we have gated access to the creek, and so do the bed and breakfast property, so, okay.
The management tool was put into place before we got here, on how we were going to be able to handle that stuff.
But, so, you're really saying that there would need to be more discussion, more information on the table before these decisions are made?
No.
No?
I'm saying that those decisions are all there, except for the campfire, and that was something that neither one of us thought about, but we can visit with the fire marshal to see what kind of controls need to be put into place for that.
Okay, thank you.
Is it appropriate for me to try to address a couple of her concerns, or would you... Okay, I didn't want to be out of order. You know, one of the things our onsite manager will do is we'll close the gates to the property after registration time, so that, you know, people just won't be able to come and go in and out at any time. We'll close it up, we'll have quiet hours, we'll have closed hours, and the gates to the trail and the gate off of Huntsville would be closed at that time. Another thing, just so you know, you know, for camping, there's a site called Hip Camp that we're managing, you know, we've got an account with, and so, you use it just like Airbnb, only it's for camping. So, you can check it out, out there, it's called hipcamp.com, so that's how the registration would occur.
And that's all in the document that she submitted, we just got the summary here today, but we have all that. That becomes part of the stabilization, or a part of the requirements for the PUD.
I'm Carol Kendrick, y'all may know or not know that Bill and I owned the Magnolia Gardens Inn for 17, 18 years. So, I'm extremely familiar, extremely familiar with the property that Brenda's talking about. And we have nothing to gain by offending the Springdale Downtown group, like Brenda, hope the owners succeed. I cannot tell you how deeply I do not want those campsites to be there, and here's why. When we had the Magnolia Gardens Inn, we had one time with camping with our knowledge and one time with camping without our knowledge. And you need to understand that Bill and I lived there. We also had an onsite manager that lived there. It is very difficult to control campers, especially if it's related to an event. They drink all night, they smoke pot all night, they have their music going all night. Now, they're talking about putting it to the south, I know exactly who she's talking about, but there's something to be considered, the way that Spring Creek goes around the Magnolia... I don't, are we calling it the Magnolia Gardens? That property that the Spring Downtown owns now. It forms a natural amphitheater, and the noise is impressive. And I'm sure Teresa and Gibb can give testimony to how what you think is manageable noise becomes unbearable. And campers keep it going during the night, their fireworks go through the night, and even with an onsite manager, and we lived there, we could not control that. They can walk onto the property, you know, people showed up, you know, if there was campsite there, people showed up that were not registered guests, you can, it is not fenced all the way around. And we own the medical clinic, we own the million-dollar home that's on Shiloh, on the other side of that pie-shaped, so we continue to live there. You know, we're, and I think, Patsy, we're zoned residential, I think.
Are you still part of the PUD?
Well, apparently, we're still part of the PUD. And the PUD has, for the past 20 years, you know, been an event center, a bed and breakfast, caretaker's home, parking, you know, we've worked all through that, you know, over the years. The only new thing that I know that would involve rezoning is the campsites. And for whatever it's worth to you, remember, I have nothing to gain by offending these nice people who want to build Springdale. But the campsites, I think, having lived through that, has the potential for a disaster. They can, they can put up landscaping, you know, that blocks one's vision of seeing it, but you can't put up landscaping that blocks the campers that are roaming around the property. So, I wish them the very best, I hope they're wildly successful without campsites. Thank you. Oh, did I say I was Carol Kendrick in 633 North Shiloh? I meant to say that if I didn't, thank you for your attention.
Any other questions or comments? To the commission?
So... This is a call for the vote as the amendment was presented.
So, I'm curious about the campsites. What are we, when we say campsite, are we talking tent campsites, are we talking trailer campsites, what are we talking about?
Yeah, so, it's something of an experiment for us, so, we're not going to build any structures, so it is tents. So, we have one area where people would bring their own, and we can set up little locations for them within that area. And then, another area where we're looking to set two larger, they're actually teepee structures that we own, and those would be set, and those would be something you could reserve. I would call it maybe glamping light, you know, not totally glamorous, but it would be a nice setup to be in that teepee, you wouldn't have to come there with anything, everything would be provided on those teepee locations. But the other sites would be bring your own tent.
So, when you close the gate, as I say...
Mm-hmm, gates, mm-hmm.
Is there any other access to the property?
Well, can you crawl over a fence? Yeah, you can.
I mean, is there any other access around through?
Yeah.
I love that place, I've been there before, and done things there, but...
So, on the west side, that gate, that fence is not completed, but we are completing it this spring as well, along with the landscaping. So, we'll have fencing on every side except what would be next to the City of Springdale property, on the east side, south end of the east side, there's a wall there. If you're, if you're going down there and you look across the creek, you see a real low floodplain area, and then you see a wall, kind of a stone, I believe it's a stone wall. There is not a fence right there, so you could climb that wall, or...
It's about eight feet, 10...
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to, I haven't looked at it, that, I just know it provides a barrier to access. There is a stairwell behind the little craftsman house that goes down to that floodplain area, and we plan to fence that stairwell, so you won't be able to use that at all. Now, can someone climb a fence? Of course they can, right? And we're not going to have, like, motion detectors and Dobermans or anything like that, so, I don't know.
Are there facilities in place for the campers?
Yeah, in terms of restrooms and showers, yes, sir.
Alcohol around a campfire?
As long as you're following the local laws, yes.
Sound around the campfire?
So, we have quiet hours, and those were provided in our write-up, but basically, it's 10:00 PM.
Wouldn't violate the city's noise ordinance?
That's correct. And the noise ordinance, of course, applies 24/7.
People are going to be able to come in, drive in, set up a campsite?
Or ride their bike in.
Or ride their bike, or walk.
Or walk.
And at a certain point in time, they're not going to be able to leave?
They will have a code for a one gate, so that is...
They can come and go.
Yes, but you would have to be registered and have that code to be able to do that, yeah. Because, say, you go to Arts Center, the Ozark Show, and it lasts past 10:00 PM, right? You'll have to be able to get back in.
Done your research on urban camping?
You know, we've done quite a bit of research, and it's a lot of times you see it in association with trails. Along the Katy Trail in Missouri is where I've done quite a bit of research and looked at campsites in those areas. And then, you know, there's a spur into Columbia, and there's camping in Columbia on that spur, so we have looked at some.
Is there any... I'm so sorry, go right ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I mean, I think it's why we're starting with such a small number of spaces and a trial period, and, you know, if we find out this summer that it's not working very well, we just take it off Hip Camp, and we don't do it anymore.
Is there security, is there security provided there, or is it just simply the onsite manager?
Well, they're employed, so, yeah, I mean, they don't carry a gun, and they don't, you know...
So, if there was something to happen there, they'd just simply recall PD?
They would have to call 911, yes, that's correct. If someone were violating the law, they would call the police.
Danny, do we have any history of when this was campgrounds before, to her point, the young lady that spoke earlier about the issues that they have? Do we have any history on that, that you're aware of?
No.
Yeah.
So, if we were to approve this, and, you know, the campsites being a big factor in this whole thing, and there were violations or anything like that, what's... Is there any grounds to stand on to remove that?
Well, the PUD would be under review, and we'd have to come back and look at whether or not we want to continue that operation of it. If they go beyond the number of sites we just talked about, they'd have to come in and have it amended again, too, if it doesn't really work. So, we're really starting out with an experiment of those number of sites that Brenda's just alluded to. So, we would be able to revoke the camping part if that's a problem? We could come back and revisit the PUD itself, because that's our contract zoning. This is what we're saying is going to happen at this location with these parameters, and if part of that parameter doesn't work, then we would have to come back and amend it.
And I'm, I'd be probably the first to say, "Hey, this isn't working." You know, we definitely would not want to have police calls, it's not good for our reputation, or the other folks who are there in the bed and breakfast. We, you know, wouldn't want to operate something that's a negative to the community.
It gives the opportunity to have something unique in downtown Springdale that you're not going to find along the trail anywhere else, with as much control as we can get this to start, because it is a PUD. If they were coming in for a general commercial zoning and asked for this to go in there, we wouldn't have the controls that we have, because it is a PUD.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like, I'd like to speak to the issue of the times that we've had to call the police over the years that we've lived there. We've lived in the house we're in 25 years, and we've had to call the police several times. Used to, it would go beyond the designated time for loud noise in Springdale. Other times, as Carol Kendrick spoke of, that's just really a natural amphitheater, and the windows in our house, we have an arts and crafts home, two-story with the basement, the windows rattled, so we'd call the police. When this company took over the property, they sent us a letter and told us not to call the police. Well, we're going to still, probably, if it's too loud, or they're down at the creek, huron, in the water, we're going to call the police. We don't want our windows to rattle, and we want to be able to be in our yard again, you know, so the idea of we're going to shut it down at 10, I appreciate the fact there's an onsite manager, but you still have to consider you've got the bed and breakfast in operation again, and people camping, is there going to be alcohol allowed? Are they going to be able just to be sitting around their little tent, drinking all night, and then deciding to go take a dip in the creek, or climb the fence into my backyard? That's another consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
What was the, there were seven sites, seven sites, campsites? What is the maximum number of people that you would allow?
Yeah, so, they're small, so, I think, you know, on the five small sites, that would probably be the max of two per tent, so that's 10 people there. And then, in the two teepee structures, you could have four people, so that would be eight. So, 10 and 8, 18, 18 humans.
There's not any, we don't have any hotels downtown, I'll just reiterate that. The only closest hotels to downtown are out on 71. And so, I think it would, I think it would be a big boon to business, and, and again, nowadays with people being able, you know, with Airbnb, folks can rent their, you know, they can have people come stay. And in my, in my opinion, 18 people, that, you know, 18 people doesn't seem like a huge risk. I do like the fact that we're taking it small, starting small, understanding that there are going to be kinks that need to be worked out, probably, and then see how that goes, and then maybe go bigger. But I think, I think as far as an initial investment, you know, they need at least the five sites and the two, and the two tents to make it a viable thing, and then see how it goes. And I live right across there, so...
I would agree with Peyton. I don't, I have nothing against camping, and I think this would be a great thing for our city. I just simply want us to be careful that it does not become a burden on the Springdale Police Department, that they have to simply be out there all the time monitoring 10 people, 18 people, whatever the number is, don't have a problem with, as long as they monitor it, and we have the ability to go back if something goes sideways with it, I'm all for it.
And so, did I understand that this is something, that if there was a continual problem, that a trend, we saw a trend, that we could come back at any time and revoke it?
We had that advantage because it's a PUD.
So, I think, I mean, if there was a place to try that, that would be it.
That'd be the perfect place to try.
Because very quickly, we can, we can act pretty quickly to come in and say, "This is not working, there's protections for that." On the other end, I can see if you have what was described in the negative of camping, it's going to fail really fast. So, of course, the people that are running this, it would be wise to be careful and to make real clear what happens if you don't follow the rules, and I think it potentially could bring a good thing, people on bikes, or...
The only additional comment I'd make on this is it's a unique concept. Keeping it small is probably to its advantage. I mean, I would say that willing to try it out, as far as see what happens with it, but I don't know that I would be in favor of expanding it, in that whole piece, because this is not really an area, I would say that you would want to be known as being a campground in that regard, but in a small nature like that, so I think it kind of complements what we're doing with the trail systems and so forth on it. But as long as we have the protection as far as, and I don't know if we have to set some additional parameters on if X amount of violations or excessive calls within a certain timeframe would deem, as far as it need to be brought back, that we need to probably revoke?
Well, I think the owners and the police department can help us determine what is excessive and what kind of calls they are. We're thinking outside the box, we're going to have to start, see how it works, and just stay on top of it and see if it's something that's going to work.
Just let the trend be our guide. There's going to be, I mean, there's probably going to be one bad apple, but that one doesn't need to destroy the whole bushel, so...
Again, I think that just keeping it small can keep that under control.
Exactly.
I would say as far as in the future, if this comes back as far as to want to be able to expand or anything like that, I don't know that I'd be in favor of it, so...
No, we're not asking for that now, and they have a reputation that we're protected.
I know we're not asking for it now, but I just, I think that's the call-out as far as, I think it's a unique concept, but the concept, I think, will probably only be successful if it's kept small, because that's the only way it's going to be manageable.
Well, I think how this concept goes here, so goes the rest of camping in Springdale if we ever decide to expand that out to any other place. So, it's beholden upon the owner to do it right, it's beholden upon us to do what's right, and I think together with keeping it small and starting, we have to start somewhere, I'd recommend we start here.
Is this part of the trail? I can't remember as far as being lit, or is there plans to do any lighting on it?
Not right now, there's not.
Call for the vote.
Yeah, call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Thank you. Past eight zero, by the way.
Oh, sorry, I got ahead of the game there.
Next section is conditional use, C17-15 EcoSite LLC, 2894 West Sunset, use unit 33, antenna in a C2, presented by James Cardinal. I'm also going to, there is a variance as well. B18-15, variance for deletion of landscaping requirements, presented by James Cardinal as well, so...
So, probably look at both of those. Obviously, we'll have to vote on them separates on it, but out of respect of keeping you here, I don't, so.
Yeah, this was just for the conditional use. So, James Cardinal, 6402 Corporate Drive, Indianapolis, Indiana, requesting approval for a 120-foot self-support monopole with no guide wires and a 10-foot lightning rod at the top. And this would be built by EcoSite LLC for coverage and capacity issues with T-Mobile.
Okay.
Steve, did you have something?
I'm on the variance in.
Oh, okay.
So, if you're considering both of them at the same time, I'll come up and keep James Cardinal.
Can you tell us exactly where it's gonna be on that site?
Yeah, it's gonna be in the back, in the back of the property.
Do we still have that same pointer?
I do.
Thank you, Steve. Mine, the battery is not strong enough for it to get all the way over there, so I'm gonna have to replace my batteries.
So, in the back of the property, closer to the west property line. Kind of back behind the dumpsters and the loading docks.
Right there.
Staff comments?
Uh, the ingress and egress is acceptable. There's no off-street parking requirements for it. There are no refuse or service areas requirements. The utilities are acceptable. The screening and buffering, they are asking for a variance on the landscaping requirements. We'll talk about that in a minute. There would be no sign. The yard requirements are acceptable. They meet the fall zones that is required to the adjacent residential. And as you can see, it's quite a ways to get to the residential. The size and the shape of the lot is acceptable. The proposed landscaping, that variance has been requested. There is a general compatibility of putting this tower in this location. And so, it really is a, we've been through all the FAA issues. We've addressed all those issues. I think everything else like that is taken care of. You might want to tell us what kind of variance you're asking for, for the screening and landscaping requirements.
Thank you again, members and staff. I actually have a PowerPoint again. But, and it, it shows more of the pictures of the back of the building. So, this is, this is the main Harps Grocery Store property that we're looking at. And this is the area of the, where the cell tower will be sited. Next slide, please. That's Gutten Son that you see running up beside it. Next slide. Uh, this is the current use, basically a parking lot, although as you saw a second ago, the loading doors for the store are right there as well. Next slide, please. There are two dumpsters and one food waste grease container right there, right now in this general area. Next slide, please.
Compactor too?
Say again, ma'am.
Compactor for the cardboard there too?
Yes, it's, but it's, can you back up two, please? Maybe I didn't take a picture of it, but there it is. Yes. Uh, next. This is a cell tower about a half a mile to the east in approximately the same distance off Sunset on a side street. But that's, and forgive me for taking that picture when the sun was right behind the tower. I apologize to y'all for that.
Down there by Susan's.
Yes. Yes. And then one more you can see, uh, next slide, please. This is what is around that cell tower. And of course, those are FCC requirements for fencing and for security and for locks. And James has detailed plans about the same or similar types of fencing that would go around this site. The main reason to request the variance is, as you can see, that the, what is there right now does not, it's not landscaped. I understand that that's not the end of, that's not the end of the inquiry, but we are talking about a parking lot with dumpsters and grease containers and trash compacters where this will go. Second, uh, main point there is that to require any kind of really extensive landscaping probably consumes the rest of that parking lot for, for all intents and purposes. So, we are talking about the back of a store that's generally, I mean, I know you can see it, but it's not a generally visible part of the, the store. And we would respectfully state that the landscaping requirement around it is not practical in these circumstances. And we would ask you to, if you grant the CUP to waive the requirement for landscaping as well.
So, can I ask a question on that? Could you put landscaping out closer to the perimeter? You know, out closer to the street where there's no landscaping currently so that there would be some additional thing to draw your eye rather than to the tower? Because sometimes we ask for you to follow the intent.
Go back a couple of slides to that picture.
You ask to follow the intent of the landscaping.
Looking back like north.
There was one, there was one that shows there's no landscaping along that side. So, putting the landscaping that would normally go around.
Look at the Gutten Son side picture. That's what she's talking about.
So, right there, there's no landscaping whatsoever. So, to put some landscaping there that would normally go next to the tower would be a beautification that would soften the look from that tower.
Didn't even think about that.
That, that, that's usually what we ask for is to follow the intent if you have an area that that can be done.
I would support landscaping in most cases. That's pushing a little bit far off of the, the site that location. I mean, had this building been built now, we would have landscaping, but it's been there a long time. And if, if they're willing to do that, that's great. I'm not sure that we could make that an exchange.
One of the other concerns, you know, Harps still intends to use this area as a parking lot and the loading area, and they back up 18-wheelers in there. Not real sure what we can do to accommodate that if we have.
If they don't have any access to that property along over there, the drive-in window that goes to Dunkin' Donuts is on that side.
That's right.
So, you're putting cars up there to turn in and out. I mean, normally I would support a lot of landscaping. This might be pushing it a little bit too far.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. And everybody knows me, knows I will push for landscaping at any time that I can. But having enough big-box retail experience, I will tell you, you're gonna tear up the pavement back there, which is usually a heavy industrial pavement that's put down for the trucks, which is extremely expensive to repair. I would be fine with no landscaping if you can assure me that a child cannot get in there. And I saw the fencing, I get the SEC, I get all that. You proved to me that the kids are safe. I'm good.
Having practiced law for 24 years, I know better than to make promises about future events.
No, 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 I'm not asking for it. I'm just saying that my concern is the children, right?
But it obviously, it obviously will be as secure as every other cell tower. And that includes the one half a mile to the east.
Yeah, I don't know that we've had any problems with the ones.
And we may not, but I would, I could care less about a shrub if I can keep a kid off trying to outdo his buddy and climb up, see if he can climb up something like that, the tallest and, and get hurt. So, long-term, I'd rather have the kids be safe.
Any other questions or comments in the audience? Yeah, if you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address, please. And as, as he's coming up to the mic, I mean, I, I, I mean, the one comment I have, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of conflicted on this as far as the whole variance piece. You know, spending 24 years of my life in retail, I've seen significant requirements as far as on retailers, as far as, and, and Mr. Covert can attest to this as well. As, I, I, you know, Sunset is a challenge as it is as far as really continuing to, to build the beautification around that. I know this is off of Gutten Son and so forth on there. Uh, I know Harps made a significant investment as far as modifications and upgrades to this location on here. Also very aware that probably cell, cell coverage and T-Mobile, whoever it is on that. All of North East Arkansas still suffers from cell coverage and I'm completely in favor of that. Just know that the, a footprint like this is a significant change in, in some of these areas and so forth on that. So, I'm a bit surprised Harps would allow a tower to go there knowing that you've got semis that have to have turn radiuses and, and things like that. I, I actually would be in favor of some of the landscaping on that. And I'm also not in favor as far as a wood fence like that. I don't know if there's a different fence that it can be more of a wrought iron type piece that still is capable as far as keeping kids out of it and so forth on it. But I think there is good opportunity. I don't think your pictures, quite honestly, did you any favor as far as showing what the existing conditions are. Because personally for me, I think that there's opportunity for that landowner to, to make improvements to that as a retailer. But that's not what's in question. I mean, what's in question as far as this tower here, I would not want to make the property any more of an eyesore in that whole piece. And so, that's just my opinion. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of continuing cell coverage and those types of things. But, and there's significant money to be made in, in these types of investments. So, I think there can be some creativity that's probably put behind this to, to continue and improve as far as the aesthetics of that area. That's just my, my comments associated with it. So, you've been standing up there for a while, but I just wanted to make sure I got that out as we were on the.
I'm Ronald Wright and I own a property just adjacent. It did not touch their property. But I am teetotal against a tire going in up there because first of all, it's gonna downgrade property values over there. And how tall is this tire? Because there is a limit on how tall a tire can be in this town. And I, I'm, again, and I'll be honest with you.
Cover that.
120.
20 plus 10.
100-foot, all monopoles are self-supporting. Towers higher than 100 feet shall be required to have FAA approval. And as issued, the permits must include the tower, tower height plus 20 feet. They've already met all those requirements of setbacks, the height of the tower, which is, what is the height of? Yes, okay.
Well, if they've met the requirements, what I'm saying here now is that if you pass it, you're downgrading our property over there. And if that's where you want to run this town, maybe you boys ought to get off the board. You need to keep us in mind at this point.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The ordinance also requires a wood fence eight feet or higher is required to be installed around the exterior lot line. The housing structure must be standard communication specification allowing to blend into normal neighborhood surroundings. Those are the requirements that they would have in here. And that's what, they have met all the requirements that we have set forth in our ordinance for monopoles, self-supporting towers and monopoles.
Yeah, all I'm, all I'm saying, those are minimal requirements. And I'll call that out. I mean, there is opportunity as far as to improve on some of that. And that, that would just be my recommendations as far as how we do that on, so.
You went with the wood tower in this because it was in the code, but also to block views in the compound since we were asking for the variance to the landscaping. So, that was the thought with the wood fence.
Okay.
What was the deciding factor for this site, this particular site?
We looked at several properties in the area. Most of the property owners either didn't get back with us. We couldn't get a deal made. So, this was the owner that wanted to work with us.
But you have identified this area as being lacking coverage is why you're looking in this general area.
Yes, and that comes from the radio frequency engineers. They give me an area to look at and this was that area.
What proximity does that really cover? I mean, what options would it have as far as other locations? When you say that they did a study in that area, if that was 800 feet or 1,000 feet away from where it is, it's still gonna meet coverage components probably, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I looked, I don't have exactly, but I looked pretty far north. I mean, more than 500 feet, more than 1,000 feet north. So, I looked at a pretty large area. There were really only three or four properties that could have met zoning because that was another thing that came into play was meeting the zoning requirements. And this was really the only place that, or the only owner that was willing to talk with us.
Okay. This would be a call for the vote. Call for the vote. And we're doing a conditional use. Call for the votes for the conditional use by Mr. Covert.
Bernato?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
No. The conditional use does not pass 5.3.
Uh, you have to write the appeal, the planning commission's decision you have to file within 15 days. You have to state the reason why you think the planning commission's decision was an error and you have to notify the adjacent property owners.
Was this being considered as the conditional use and the variance?
No, just the conditional use.
That's the conditional use, okay. Now, do you want them to go ahead and vote on the variance? If you can't, if you can't put it in there, there's no point of voting on the variance.
Lieutenant Cameron Allen, respect the request that we withdraw the variance pending the decision to appeal the conditional use decision.
Thank you. Making note of that. All right, next section, C-18-09 Gerald and Barbara Williams, 3231 North Mountain Road, use unit 14 in A1 presented by Gerald Williams.
Uh, my name's Gerald Williams and my property is at 3231 North Mountain Road. I have 14 acres there and me and my wife and son lived there for the last 20 years. And my son wants his own property. So, what I want to do is put him a small manufactured home there on that property, on two acres. It's a new.
Aaron, can you, Aaron, can you advance so we, okay, thank you.
Do you have another question?
I just want to make sure that we got the picture up there so they knew what piece of property you were looking at.
All right, it's a brand-new manufactured home. It's 24 by 44 and it's made by Good Company, Skyline Corporation. When I looked at this, I investigated around me and there on the north side, within 100 feet of where I'm gonna put this one, there is a double wide there. It's 32 by 80. On the east side, there is another double wide across the fence. And on the south side, there is a double wide there. So, I'm well aware of how to put these in and we intend to put a concrete foundation, a perimeter footer with blocks enclosure. And I have had the land perked and it perks well for what we want to do. And we have water at the road that will trench up there. And Carol Electric will put electric pole there and it'll be a 200-amp pole there. And I sure would like to have it approved if possible.
Staff comments?
The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. The off-site parking and loading areas are acceptable. Refuse and service areas are acceptable. The utilities, he just addressed that he had a protest done. We have not seen that. We would need to see that Septicsys approval or the building inspector would need to see that. Screening is not required. There's not, you can't have a sign for it. The yard requirements are acceptable. The size and shape of the site is acceptable. There is no requirement for proposed landscaping and the general compatibility with the adjacent properties is acceptable.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Where, where on the property would the mobile home go?
About halfway up to where my house is up on top of the hill.
Right in that area, right up in there.
Our driveway kind of makes it a hook.
We got the arrow up there on, on down there.
Goes down, makes a curve. Yeah, there, there it is.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Bernato?
Yes.
Conditional use passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on April the 24th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And next item on the agenda, C-18-10 Russell Merrill, Shave the Planet, southeast corner of Bacchus and 71 Business, use unit 44, mobile vending in a C2 presented by Russell Merrill.
Thank you for your time. My name is Russell Merrill with Shave the Planet. For about 10 years, we have provided delicious summertime treats in the form of shaved ice, a community gathering place and multiple jobs for young adults. Just requesting permission to continue operation there at the corner of Bacchus and Thompson.
The reason he's asking is because it's a new owner.
Correct.
Right. And you can't transfer a conditional use from one to the other. So, he's in to ask for a new location, I mean, for that location. Ingress and egress is acceptable. Off-street parking is acceptable. Refuse and service areas is acceptable. Utilities, screening are both acceptable. There was nothing shown on your site plan that you would have any signs other than on the building itself. I'm assuming you're not having anything, any other signs?
No, ma'am.
Yard requirements are acceptable. Size and shape is acceptable. There's no proposed landscaping for it. It is acceptable with the. It is acceptable with the following conditions. May not operate between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. No obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation of any other use on the site. Maintain on the site a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. The health certificate is required. Display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow. No obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs. No vending upon a public way. Sound any device that produces a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance or violate any other city ordinance in connection with the vending operation. Keep the vending sites clean, free of paper or refuge of any kind generated from the operation of their business. All trash or debris accumulated within twenty feet of any vending stand collect and deposit into a trash container.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes, and I love those tasty treats.
Conditional use passes eight-zero.
Steph will prepare, the resolution goes to council on the twenty-fourth.
Not going to get you any discounts or anything, so.
Yeah, you better not get it free when-
Right here.
Shameless, shameless.
Next item, C eighteen dash eleven Arvest Banks, thirty-one ninety East Robinson Roads, also a lot split eighteen dash zero six, presented by Bruce. Forgive me if I pronounce it wrong, Bruce.
Not Bruce, though, we have a new person.
You're off easy. It's a dibbly-azdy, but I'm Chris Ball, the president of architecture and design for the Vecino Group, three oh five West Commercial, Springfield, Missouri. Sorry, Bruce got called elsewhere tonight, so.
And we do have the proper paperwork for him to make the presentation.
Appreciate the opportunity, commissioners and staff. We've been before you to rezone this property previously to MF twelve. Tonight specifically, we're talking about tandem lot usage. What this graphic doesn't reflect, unless you kind of look carefully through the yellow crosshatching, is that this is actually three parcels, one small parcel there immediately adjacent to the street, and then two larger parcels behind. We are, of course, looking to develop this in a multifamily and senior housing type venue, and we need to obviously access those out to the street, so we're requesting a tandem lot approval.
And the division into different tracts is really for financing purposes and development purposes, because you have different kinds of housing or different age groups in different portions of it.
So, correct. There's three lots now. When we're done, there'll only be two lots, but she is, Patsy is, as usual, spot on. The senior housing is towards the rear, and the family is towards the front, and they cannot reside on the same property, so we're-
That's why we're creating the lots. Their access easement will be through the property as designed into their facility with parking and the access easement across to there.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Any staff comments? Any comments or questions from the audience? If you'll come up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Sam Blassey, three zero one eight East Robinson Avenue, I own the property due west of this. And I don't quite understand what two lots are being joined. Starts out being three, and you're going to reduce it to two, so which two are being joined?
Well, the front access off of, or twelve, would be connected to the first lot there, and they're really separating the two lots because they have two different kind of housing projects in there. It'll still all be one development with one ownership, with one management company, but for financing purposes, they have to create two separate lots.
There already, there already is three.
There were three deeds, correct. Aaron, we can't hear a word you're saying, so you're going to have to come up here and say that, or Debbie's going to be on your case big time.
Sorry to be so dense on this, but it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, well-
The way, the way it's done is there are three deeds on the parcel, and the county recognizes parcels by deeds and meets and bounds. In the city of Springdale, to have a legal lot, you have to have a platted lot. And this will be platted as one lot with the back portion separated off to what she's talking about for financing reasons, to have the one distinct unit with housing and age groups as opposed to another one on the front. So, when we get that access, we have to do the tandem lot, and the access will go all the way through the lot. Is that your question?
It's all about access through all the lots.
Yeah, and it's really about financing and the legalities of how you put this kind of stuff. It's not affecting any other pieces of property, any other parcels. It's just this piece right here for their development purposes to be able to do it in this manner. That's as clear as it can get. It's confusing, yes, but it's, it's a process we go through because of the way they're trying to develop and the way the property is put together. Okay?
Any other questions or comments? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Um, let's see, we're doing the conditional use. Call for vote by Mrs. Haney on the conditional use.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
The conditional use passes eight-zero.
Steph will prepare, the resolution goes to council on the twenty-fourth.
And the lot split?
The tandem lot split. Motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Lot split passes eight-zero. All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. Final plat eighteen dash zero one Leroy Daniel, east of Highway two sixty-five, south side of two sixty-four, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Craig Davis. I'm with Engineering Services, and I'm here to represent Leroy Daniel at eighteen fifty-five East Highway two sixty-four. And Aaron, I may need your help to explain this. What it is, is Mr. Daniels owned three separate parcels. The two houses on the north end and the, um, storage units on the south and west. Apparently, he built the storage units, he got everything zone C two, including the two residential parcels. He built the, um, excuse me, I'm losing, been late. The storage units, he got approval, of course, that's according to Mr. Leroy about twenty, thirty years ago.
And it wasn't in the city limits, right?
Uh, it was.
Yes.
Nineteen ninety's, and they're still doing large ones, but-
Right. And I believe he told me they were built nineteen ninety-four. He said he got permits to build them. He got inspectors out there to inspect and to approve where the storage units go. Never had it rezoned. The problem was, he never had it platted. Okay? The original boundary is the overall boundary you see there up on two sixty-four, east and west, and on the south. He never had it replatted. And being in the city limits at that time, that would have been a requirement. Why that did not happen, he doesn't know, and I surely don't know. He sold off the storage units to All-Star Storage LLC. And when he did that, apparently there was some confusion as to what he was selling and what All-Star was buying. So, he came to me for, to do a survey, to basically do a property line adjustment. And that's when we kind of dug into it a little further and found out that you can't do a property line adjustment on something that was never even platted. That's when I came to Aaron and asked what to do. Um, so we're going through this process of final plating. Just to give you a little more history, the central property, north central property is his home. It still remains C two. The, he built the house on the northeast corner and sold that to his daughter, but prior to that, had it rezoned back to SF two. And then sold that to her last year. He sold the, um, storage units to All-Star Storage in sixteen, I believe. And so, really, I guess the main thing is, is just try to clear all this up. Actually get it final platted as, you know, Leroy Daniel tracks. We have a track one, two, three, and just get things straightened up.
With a variance to allow the buildings to stay where they are, they're too close to the, to the lot lines. Uh, there is a note on the plat that says, little bitty print. Front setbacks of thirty feet, fifty of parking is allowed between the right-of-way and the buildings. Side zero, subject to applicable fire and building codes. The rear is twenty feet. So, there still is an issue whether or not they will have to go back and add fire ratings inside those buildings because they're too close to the property lines. That's a fire code issue, that's not a planning issue, so.
So, for the plat, when we get a plat like this, we have certain timelines we get, that get stuck in the pipeline. And we address it as staff, this went to tech plat, we got comments back on it. For the plat to continue, when we found the buildings in conflict with the setbacks, which would require variance for it to be platted, that is our regulatory control to say to bring this into conformity. So, the route for that was to come before the Board of Adjustments here and Planning Commission to ask for those variances for this process to continue. It's been through the technical review process. We've asked for some corrections just from administrative standpoint that Craig's used to going through with me on a daily basis. But total, it was around eight variances where we had conflicts of buildings with property lines. Some of those were one feet, some of them were because of proximity to the sheds on the adjacent properties, as you can see in the little corners where the property lines come together. These are typical incidents that we run into when we have sometimes rural areas or A-one areas or annexed areas that come into the city, or previous old properties that were separated by meets and bounds with county and not regulated at the city at that time. And this is not uncommon, unfortunately, but the route is to get the variances or to ask for variances to be proper.
So, from my education, I'm assuming we're able to replat the All-Star property even though All-Star's now the owner?
Well, their names are on here. They have to be a signature to the plat. Everybody who owns property out there has to be a signator. And if you look at the plat themselves, there's several, several people have to plot, uh, sign it as part of the owners.
Right, I guess my question is, I'm assuming they've already seen this, and they're in compliance with it, otherwise this is all for naught.
Other, it wouldn't be here.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've tried our best, with Craig and them, to let them know what the repercussions are of any action to this. I mean, they can always pull it out, not do a plat, and then it would, you know, if other permits or issues came up, then they would be subject to that, which we, you know, we try our best to communicate those as best we can. But that is part of the city and the best interest of the city and what we do in applying our ordinance to everyone fairly.
Okay, so, we'll be voting on the final plat, but we also have, as far as to your point that you brought up, is the variance, and I did not read that earlier, is eighteen dash thirteen Leroy Daniel, eighteen twenty-one, eighteen fifty-five, eighteen eighty-three, East Highway two sixty-four. Be variance on several buildings on the property to remain in its current location on that, so. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? So, final plat?
Subject to staff comments.
Make a motion, subject to final comments. We have a motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Final plat passes eight-zero, and then the variance, this would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Variance passes eight-zero.
If you want this to go to council for approval next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in the mayor's office by Thursday noon. Actually, it needs to be in our office by Thursday at noon, sorry.
By when, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
By when?
By Thursday at noon, if you want it on next Tuesday's agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, next section, large-scale developments, L eighteen dash zero eight Rexel, east of I forty-nine, south of Wagon Wheel Roads, lot two, Conestoga Park. Also have two variances, and they're B eighteen dash fourteen, variance reduction in number of parking spaces from twenty-nine to twenty-one. And then variance of modification of commercial design standards presented by Craft and Toll.
Good evening. My name is Bradley Bridges with Craft and Toll, Nick Pierce.
Nick Pierce with Neilson Architecture.
And first off, I'd just like to say that, you know, this large scale, we feel definitely meets the intent of the original development in this park here. Couple of the surrounding businesses are similar in nature. In association with the variances, the parking variance, the company currently operates with an approximation of the same number of parking stalls. They have about eleven employees on staff. Most of the business that will be done there will be semi-trailers against the loading docks there. There is a roll-up door in front for box trucks or pickup trucks. So, the owner and the tenant feel very comfortable about the parking. We'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have about the development.
Staff comments?
Uh, your comment was that it is designed in keeping with what's already out there in that subdivision. Is there covenants that go with that subdivision, or are you just trying to mimic what the buildings are out there?
Well, as far as the businesses, the business type is what I was referring to.
Okay, that, that's different than the commercial design standards.
Correct.
We need to go through the commercial design standards and let you address those so we know what we're talking about for the variance. The front and side and rear elevations, can you bring those up, Aaron, so we can look at those? Uh, the intent of the ordinance is that the predominant material on the structure is not to be a metal building. So, explain to us, the top picture is which, which first, where you see that from?
That would be the north elevation, so that's facing a, or sorry. West would be facing-
Facing forty-nine?
Forty-nine, correct.
Okay, so if you're coming up the ramp on forty-nine, that's what you're going to see?
Yeah.
And what are the differences in materials in those, and what are you proposing there to be predominant material on that side of the building?
So, we're using a high-quality metal panel, is that horizontal poche that you see. We've used it on a few jobs here lately. It's a very high-strength, durable material. It has a really nice industrial look to it. It's, uh, it's not your standard masonry or EFS product, but to go with the look that this client was wanting, I think this material best achieves that. It's got a good contrast in texture and differentiates, I think, the facade pretty well for passing traffic to see it as a more attractive warehouse than just about anything in that area.
Okay, why does it not extend the full length of that, of that side view? And you left out two and a half panels. Is there a reason why you didn't extend it all the way down the side?
There is a truck dock there just for the possibility of damage, putting a higher quality material there.
Okay. Okay, then the next view is which direction?
That would be the north view. That would be the north view, so the north view backs up against a, another adjacent property that has a large chain link fence, storage, warehouse. You, I mean, not a real pretty elevation, so that was one of the reasons why we tried to minimize all of our articulation on that side.
But when you're coming down the street, okay, and, and you turn off onto whatever the name of this street is, that's the view you see when you come down the sides of the street?
More or less, yes. It's from a distance and it's pretty obscured, um, I don't think that's going to be a prominent.
From a distance, it's pretty obscure when it seems to be fairly close to that street?
The off-ramp or the east-west wagon wheel?
When you come off of wagon wheel, you come south on this street, you come beside the, the equipment places there, you're coming south. Then you turn into this new, these, these other lots, that's the first building you see today, right?
That would be, I mean, your east elevation, I think you would see primarily coming down towards the building.
Okay, what's, which one of those is east, which one of those is east?
Third from the top, so the next one down.
Okay, so that's the one you see on the other side of that, uh-huh?
Correct.
And then the bottom is what, the one you see from the entrance area?
Correct.
Okay, why in the second view up here is the material not extended to break up that long expanse of a metal building?
That was where we were thinking that it's going to be obscured by the fence of the adjacent property. We can extend some accent panels down that as well.
That.
It just was an area of least interest to us, I guess, from an architectural standpoint.
That's pretty visible through there.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking through a bunch of forklifts and equipment.
You're not.
The last time I drove by, but I could be mistaken.
Let's go back to the.
I drive by it every day.
And then, like I said, we can dress it up for sure, I'm not against that, if that's.
Okay, so are you saying you would modify that, that elevation and add those panels all the way across? Two-thirds of the way across? I mean, we're not gonna design at the table, I think the intent you hear here is not meeting the intent of the design standards.
Yes, we can add some accent panels on that backside.
You are, you're putting more than sixty percent of the parking in front of the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, that, that, that's one of the things that they would be asking for, a variance, more than sixty percent. Basically, most of your parking is in front of the building, correct?
In fact, all of it is, yes ma'am.
Because you have access for trailers and stuff in the back, and that separates the two types, okay?
Correct.
I'm building your case for you, okay? Continuous internal pedestrian walkways, no less than five feet in width from the public sidewalk to the principal customer entrance. You have no sidewalk access out to the street.
We have had discussions with the staff, and we do have a few possible ways to meet that requirement. Uh, and we will definitely meet that requirement.
Okay, so that's not part of your request, you're gonna make that one okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, internal walkways shall connect focal points of pedestrian activity until feature landscaped areas along no less than fifty percent of their length. You have foundation landscaping on this one?
Negative.
No?
The sidewalk does abut the building, so we are asking the variance for the landscape, foundation landscape requirement.
So have you put additional landscaping in those islands around the parking or along the front to counter the lack of landscaping next to the building?
We do have the landscape plan. I did not bring my, my landscape architect with me to go through the exact numbers.
Did you calculate the percentage increase that you're doing?
Of green space.
Okay, are you adding enough additional landscaping in the front of the building to counter what you would put along the building if you put it adjacent to the building with foundation landscaping?
We can certainly agree to doing that.
Okay. Uh, the pathway has to be distinguishable from driving surfaces with pavers, bricks, or scored concrete, you're gonna do that, right?
Correct.
Okay, we already talked about the sidewalk being adjacent to the building, you're putting an additional landscaping to counteract that. Uh, is the sidewalk six foot, or how wide is the sidewalk, is it five-foot sidewalk in front of the building?
It is five feet, so we have well stops there also.
Okay.
I'm sure that we have that adequate space there.
Uh, have you provided at least two items listed as a central feature or community spaces, and if so, what are they?
We will be doing the window shopping and pedestrian plaza, we'll have some seating options available.
Okay. You have two of those, and you're gonna identify where those are gonna be? And they are accessible to the public by sidewalk, correct?
They will be.
Okay, you putting a transit stop, or are you asking for that as a variance?
Uh, we will be asking for a variance on that.
Uh, the outdoor storage, trash compactors, is it, uh, must be landscaped so that the functions are fully contained and out of view of the adjacent property and the public right of way? Where's your dumpster location?
Uh, it's in there near the northwest, uh, right by the, yeah, right there.
And it is screened with landscaping around it?
Fully screened.
Okay, so you're not asking for any variance on that?
Correct.
Okay, wing walls that incorporate landscaped areas and/or places for sitting, is, where do you have that in mind?
Well, um, to be honest with you, it wasn't exactly clear on the comment.
Okay.
We'll get some further clarification on that.
Why are we designing this all here?
Well, we're making sure we know exactly what variances you're asking for.
Yeah.
Okay? And what screening walls are you, are you providing, where, are you gonna be parking vehicles outside and/or equipment or materials outside? Those storage areas could be screened.
It will be fence that meets the requirements.
Okay, that, okay, so that's not part of your requirement?
Right.
So the variance includes no transit stop, additional landscaping in place of foundation landscaping, and you are changing the material, so you're not asking for a variance to the predominant materials, but you are asking for sixty percent of the parking to be in front of the building, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what it boils down to. The rest of them, they're gonna take care of.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we have comments from engineering, uh, we have some comments about, well, anti-needs to be, to have an actual description, uh, we just talked about the screening. Uh, all comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. By the calculations and percentage of landscaping, the sidewalk we just talked about. Engineering comments include, um, stockpiling of construction spoil materials. Uh, your return comments stated this was on sheet C one oh two, but it was not located. You need to make sure that that's added on there?
It, the, the incorrect sheet number was listed in the response, I apologize. We, it is listed on one oh four, one oh five, and one oh six, so that was a mistake.
Streetlights? Uh, streetlights have to be included?
We do show the one along the frontage called out as public. Uh, we do need to add the private ones and call those out as private onto the plan though.
Okay, so the plans will be updated to take care of that?
Correct.
And you need a grading permit that will have to be obtained once the plans are approved? And you have detention on site?
We do have detention.
That's already been approved, there's no problem with that. The final drainage report needs to be signed and sealed, and we'll need a copy of the file these months before approval. And I hate to go through all that, but we've got to know what things we're actually giving variances for, for commercial design standards. Everybody knows we don't have this issue when it comes up later.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? See the commission?
So, on this parking, I just wanna make a comment that that restricts your building if it ever has to be sold and reused for.
Right.
One, one thing that we did look at for future tenant use, the storage area is all concrete, so it would simply require the removal of a portion or the fenced area, and that could be re-strapped and worked into additional parking for a future tenant.
Okay.
They do have the capability to pick up those eight spaces.
Okay, I, I just, because later on, when the next people come in, I wanna be able to say, too bad, because bought it that way, but.
We usually have those comments, what you set parking to, that's what you're gonna be restricted to, if you can come up with some additional spaces.
So my other comment is that sometimes when I look at something like this, I think you're putting too much building on too small of a lot for what your plan is, when you're requiring this much changes. The other is that, to me, you're nowhere close to meeting commercial design standards in your materials, in the views, in, and when I look at some of the new buildings going up on the other side of wagon wheel, we're doing a big disservice to protecting their property values to allow something. Now, I understand the two buildings close by may look like that, but those were grandfathered in, correct, Nancy? So you can't look at that and say, I wanna build it just like them, because that was put in long before our standards that we have now have been put in place.
I certainly understand your concern, but I, I think that, that the materials, as Nick spoke to earlier, are not your typical corrugated manhole panels.
And I, and I don't know, but, you know, here's what's going in across, and when you look at this and you look at the building that you're proposing, here's another got brick all the way around. Very, very different
I understand.
piece together and look that you have.
So can we go back to the elevations, the four elevations of north, yeah, thank you. So I understand, if I understood you correctly, on the, on the top, which is your northern side, which is the side that is viewed coming off forty-nine, is that a correct statement?
That's the east.
Oh, east side, I'm sorry.
Second would be the north.
West side.
Okay, or west side, okay. So the top picture is what you're gonna see coming off of forty-nine?
Correct.
And you did not wanna run the brown down the rest of the two and a half panels because that's where trucks are backing into a dock?
Correct.
Is it possible to bring that panel out on the other side of the dock to simply shield the trailers altogether?
Extend and make a screen wall?
Yeah, yeah, so basically, that, so basically, at the end of the day, your concern is a driver backs in their jux, back jacks sideways, hits it, tears it up, I get that. I'm asking, is it possible to bring it off the building to a screen so the trailer would be completely behind it, so that people coming off forty-nine wouldn't see it at all?
Talking about having some external screens.
It could be possible, you have to do a screen there that could extend up.
I mean, we can design this at the table, or you can say, no, you don't accept it like this, and they have to go back.
Well, so one of the things I try to do is just to make sure that, what I'm trying to explain to them is something that's within their parameters to do. Um, and I agree with you a hundred percent, I don't wanna design at the table, but it would be something that we would wanna see if, if, you know, if we can block the trailer view altogether from the people coming off forty-nine, that would be of a big interest to us.
I think it would help too, from forty-nine, on that side, we'll have a lot of that blocked by the, uh, the fenced area that will be the requirements.
How high is the fence?
It'll be an eight-foot tall fence. The, the trucks will be, you know, most of the trucks will be at least four feet below the typical grade in the truck well. So that eight-foot fence would, should cover the majority of that, and then there's the dumpster screen there as well.
So then you see a blank wall, you see a metal wall.
But it's not gonna see the building, I mean, it's not gonna block the building.
So I understand what you're saying about, I, I understand what you're saying about the fence. I would just tell you from my personal comments, I would like to see the trucks completely screened with the same material, so someone coming off forty-nine is not gonna see that break in the two and a half panels, right? They're just gonna see that contiguous, so that's what we would be looking for to block the trucks.
Correct.
I'd also recommend, as far as that northern view, that there needs to be some additional breaks in that.
I mean, could you do similar to what the third one has, so it's every couple of panels, you do a section of that, you skip a couple of panels, and then you do a section till it breaks at that wall?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, we're just the variance that, 'cause now I've forgotten, it's the landscaping and the transportation, those are the only two, right? They've agreed to.
To do all the separate, yes.
Fix the metal and all that.
But, you know, it's, it's still, the predominant material is not going to be anything other than metal.
That is a variance.
That is a variance, right, yes. Because your brakes in the, in the walls is metal panels now, it's a different quality, it's a different kind. Now, I haven't seen the material itself, does it have, is the color, is it, is it powder coated? What, what kind of surface does it have on it?
Yes, it's a high-quality powder-coated metal, heavier gauge, better finish than your typical R panel.
Do you know what the gageing is, like, or that?
I wanna say it's a twenty-two.
So something that we wouldn't see again?
Or twenty, sorry.
To avoid the old panting?
Correct, no. And it's got a heavy ribbed profile to it, to where it doesn't.
Closer together ribbing?
Yes, closer together, deeper.
Oh, metal, yes.
At the end of the day, it's still metal.
It is still metal.
Metal, yeah.
All right, any other questions, comments? So probably do the variances first.
We may wanna do them separate, separately.
So variance for reduction of number of parking spaces, let's be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell?
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Uh, variance passes eight zero for the parking, uh, variance for modification of commercial design standards?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell?
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
No.
No?
No.
So let's tie those, so the variance isn't approved. What you'll have to do is meet the commercial design standards or come back and change it, present something different. Right now, you have to meet commercial design standards as written.
Large-scale?
Motion to approve, large-scale, subject to staff comments.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Powell, second by Mrs. Haney.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Large-scale passes eight zero.
Can I have one bit of clarification on the commercial design standards? So the, the building material type and the footing landscaping requirement, are those?
All part of the same package, so when you come back with new standards, we'll have to identify those again, because none of it passed.
Right, okay.
That would be my only comment about, after we voted, is that probably wanna pick your battles as far as variances go, just, just because a long list and they're all lumped together. I mean, I could have easily voted for, you know, no bus stop there and the parking sp, you know, but when we have fifteen things that are, don't fall into it, I mean, it, it really kinda puts us in a tough spot, you know?
I concur.
Yeah. Know what's grandfathered in versus what, what we're liking to see come forth today, 'cause.
Thank you, thank you. Board of Adjustments, B eighteen dash zero nine, Twillan Newton, ninety-sixty-seven Wagon Wheel Road. Variance for deletion of paved access presented by Hal Newton.
My name's Hal Newton, ninety-sixty-seven West Wagon Wheel Road, and, um, the variance that, of course, that we're looking for is a, uh, the pavement access, uh, there is pavement access from Wagon Wheel Road. I didn't measure it exactly, but I'm guessing a round ninety to a hundred feet in. And I didn't have anything electronic, but if this helps, I have some pictures of what it looks like to our property line right here. We've got about a half a dozen of them here, if it would do any look. This is from the curve from the plat.
I'm gonna turn this this way so they can see what you're pointing.
This is one of the, we did a conditional use for a tandem lot split
Yes.
that has gone through arbitration, through the court system.
This is the last piece, they wanna be able to leave it with the gravel that's already there and not have to pave
that portion that's at the end of where it's already concreted down to this property, correct?
Right, and I put a little black mark where our property line starts to our place right here. And, uh, the, as far as the access goes, it's, in fact, one month ago today, we had to have a first responder and an ambulance come out for my wife. She had chest pains and numbness in her face and arms, and, I mean, this is a very solid, no potholes. It's been there for over twenty-two years, um, right off the pavement of the road that curves into her father-in-law's house. Uh, the plat's not, uh, well, yeah, it is. So it's paved from Wagon Wheel Road all the way up, and where you see it, that big white area, uh, right in the center, that's what this is that you're looking at. And the pavement curves around and goes into her father-in-law's house, and that corner's where I shot this from, uh, to our, our place. And, um, I don't have any problem with the compliance, it's just that a year of attorney's fees and, um, surveying and getting the plats done and so on, it's, uh, my wife's an RN and I'm an electronics technician by trade, and we're not rich enough to, um, to do this on top of everything else right now. And there's not really any access problems as far as emergency vehicles or anything like that. And, uh, we're planning to build a small two-bedroom home within the next, uh, two years, and I'm wondering if at that time, if it, those ordinance couldn't be attached to that if we apply for a building permit? I'm not sure how all that works yet, 'cause we haven't started.
If you grant, if you're granted the variance tonight, uh, then it, it, it goes with a piece of property. You won't have to come back when you build the house.
Okay, any other comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Commission? Be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Uh, variance passes eight zero?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, see, waivers, B eighteen dash zero seven, Sun Coast Baking, north of Sunset Avenue. West side of Forty-Street, waiver of sidewalk requirement on E, on Forty-Street, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. Um, this is for South Coast Baking, um, minor issue with the agenda. There is a four-foot sidewalk along Forty-Street, um, and we're requesting. There is a four-foot sidewalk along Fortieth Street and we're requesting the waiver of the five-foot sidewalk requirement, similar to one we just did up on Haley, along Fortieth Street.
Staff comments?
Staff doesn't have any opposition to that? They're putting a parking lot in this location. It's not, the structure's not going in there.
Correct.
They gotta have this parking lot so they can move those cars so they can start building under the building, 'cause they don't have any place to park right now, so. Four-foot sidewalk was built by the city at the time the street was widened and that was the requirement at the time.
Any questions or comments from the audience to the commission?
Call for the vote?
This would be a recommendation.
Recommendation.
Maybe to council with recommendation for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Mr. Covert? Second by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Waiver passes eight-zero. Thank you. Waiver eighteen-oh-eight Manuel Nava, sixty-nine fifty-seven East Downham Road, waiver of sidewalk requirement presented by Manuel Nava.
I don't see.
Last item on here, we've got Huntsville Storage, seventeen oh-seven, south intersection of West Huntsville and Elm Springs Road, one-year extension. It was approved in February twenty-seventeen presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is directly west of Central Junior High, off Huntsville. It was a storage unit project. We're just requesting a one-year extension of the large development.
Staff comments? None, okay. Any questions from the audience to the commission? Be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Minister Powell?
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Extension passes eight-zero. Let's see, we had, was it the rezoning? Rezoning eighteen-fourteen Timothy and Laurel Hines, west of Ivy Lane, west side of North Crossover Road, from A1 to C2 presented by Bates and Associates.
Nobody here from there.
Okay. Planning Director report.
I wanna thank you all for coming to the work session. It was a marathon session. I think we had some really good speakers. I hope you all got really good information out of that and didn't go home too. Just didn't have a little bit of time to kinda digest everything that we heard, a lot of good things going on in Springdale. What we had tentatively set for the work session on the seventeenth would be to start about three-thirty and invite economic development aspects of it, the chairman of the council,